Thanks Matt.
Craig, so smarty just balls over this one.
All right, we're live. All right, we're live. Let's go ahead and uh. I'm gonna call to order the work session for the uh. Budget hearings or budget uh for twenty fiscal year twenty six. Uh need to have a motion to adopt our agenda. Jimmy makes the motion, Scott seconds, all in favor, Jim Manos. Um before we get going on the review. And kind of link to what Jimmy just handed me, uh not to create too much anticipation. We have an issue at the state level with the public safety money, the camera, schools on cameras. So as we're thinking about budget and this and all, I'm gonna kind of take a long way around to get to my point here. As we're considering the budget, last year, we pulled the fire department budget out of the general fund completely. And put it under public safety. There are items in this budget that once. Once agreed upon are hard to cut back. Best example would be salaries. Employee salaries. Once you increase a salary. It's hard to pull that back. Now, there are other things too, not not just that, but that's probably the best example. Okay, so. As we're going through the budget. Let's keep in mind that I think just a rough estimate off the top of my head. There is a very real possibility that if one of the bills makes it through this the through Congress next year. That we may need to put about seventeen thousand dollars back into the general fund or the fire department. And that's that's just a very rough estimate. So as we go through, what I'd like to do is identify areas where. And I know I'm blindsiding Linda with this, but she's probably already aware. Um where are areas that we can go ahead and improve this year? Knowing that we may have to decrease it next year in order to make up that difference. Okay, I'm not advocating for reducing any salaries at all. That's not my point, but there are some increases that maybe we don't do quite as much. Or and and not just that, that's anywhere in the budget. It's just salaries or something that is a very. I mean, we all know you can't. It's hard to pull that back, right? So.
On the flip side, are there areas in our our um projected budget that we can actually pull from our general budget? And put it to our public safety.
I mean, they're.
In order to. Yeah, to balance it out, we could do that.
I mean, it's balance.
But no, I know that, but I said to allow for that seventeen.
Well, it gives you the cushion to say, yeah, go ahead and use where you got it.
Right, I would be cautious. I think one area you could do that is law enforcement. I would be extremely cautious about law enforcement budget. Too much changing because. One of the laws is that certain fines and forfeitures can't be used to comprise thirty five percent. Of that budget. So the higher we keep the overall law enforcement budget. The eat the more flexibility we have with fines, fortune. However, here's the kicker. That we haven't talked about yet. There was another, was it a second bill? Or was it in the the schools on camera bill? There is one, somewhere in the discussion. There was part of the bill was that, now I think this is separate bill. Then maybe we didn't talk about it. There was a bill that came up. That absolutely no fines and forfeitures may be used for the general fund. Now, didn't go very far.
Is that part of SB six fifty one?
No, I don't think so. It might have been SB six thirty one. What they were gonna do is say that you were restricted to use the funds. For road safety improvements only. So it'd be no longer for uh public safety or law enforcement at all. You would have to restrict it to, and they were trying to tie it to, it had to be within the school area. So that means we wouldn't be able to use any of the money at all, right? So. This this is a huge unknown that really will have a huge impact on us. And especially if that other bill, I can't remember the number, were to start making it forward. The idea was that they did not want fines, fines and forfeitures of any kind, not even the thirty five percent. Even the super sphere, any kind of fines and forfeiture could not go to your general budget. Which for us would mean we'd have to share our police money down. In my opinion, because I don't really, we have enough funds coming in or increase our military drastically. So scary. Now, I think that bill was still in its original house or senate. And never made it over. I think it came in very late. But that there is somebody out there pushing for that level of restriction on fines and forfeitures. So.
The others, I mean, the thing I had read is that. Any of those bills wouldn't be effective until twenty twenty eight.
There was one. There was one that would.
That was to do with.
That's two twenty five, two fifty five?
Two twenty five.
Two twenty five, yeah. And that was the one that was gonna just shut it down completely.
Yeah.
They were gonna give us a grace period, but six fifty one would still have gone into effect. And be influencing it until the end of that. So. And there are a lot of other uncertainties associated with that. So as we're talking through this. One of the things London and I've talked about is it's it's our opinion that if we commit the money. For a project, then even if the state shuts it down, like the uh.
The money just be grandfathered in?
Yeah, the Rock House project.
I mean, all that money, right?
We should, yeah, that's kind of, that's kind of what we think we would be able to do, which is kind of shady.
Yeah, that's why.
So we would have to.
If you have designated budget towards projects that are going forward.
Right.
That's something that would be grandfathered in.
It'd be grandfathered in hopefully. So we may even, if one of these bills were to pass, we might just create a separate account. And say that that account is is under that other restriction, the new restriction. So.
Give me SPRO money on a predication. Of what what happens?
Not sure. Not sure. So that, that's on what we'll talk about in the regular meeting is about how we're trying to invest what we have. Because.
But that's what we did last year. We kind of anticipated that this might go away, so we went ahead and made investments last year. We can do it again this year.
We can do it again this year.
Current money, you just can't, we can't look so far ahead thinking we're gonna have more money coming in.
Right. We also want to talk about whether we can continue. I think we're on year, we're coming up on year three with the full time employee.
And we put it on the way.
So we put money.
We can do it again, that's what we're.
We do it again. Didn't, that would be covered, because that was the thing, the other thing is with HB five eighty or six fifty one. It was gonna say you could not use any of that money for salaries. So we want to kind of.
That's gonna, that's gonna be future money. It's not gonna be something you've already said in your budget.
Right, that's so, that's why I want to, that's why I want to set this, set the stage now, so we know how. Yeah, so so as we're going through things, let's identify how we would put this fire department back under the general fund. How we're gonna protect having a sec, another officer. And then keep keeping the other things in mind and what. What can we go ahead and do this year that we know we're not gonna pull back, we won't be able to pull back?
And when it comes to grandfather, grandfathering money in. I mean, where do we stand? Is there anything we can do for Greg's project for the traffic court?
Yeah, you just. Well, it's it's already committed, but the fun thing is, I think we could still continue to use it if six fifty one goes through the way it is.
Right, because it's roads.
Because it's roads.
Yeah.
Well, it depends on if it's the house or if it's a sentence.
Right. And that was the funny thing is that they were talking about, they were actually talking about six fifty one on the floor of the house with the senate. I mean, literally right in the middle of him talking, the senate decided to retire for the year. Now, the house could have simply accepted what the senate had sent them, and then it'd be done. But no, they they had their changes and there's some bad blood and I'm going, yeah, let's kind of keep a little heat on that fire.
More bad blood.
Yeah. So let's see if we can't keep that fire burning a little bit. Uh anyway.
If they can't change, if we are truly grandfathering on the money that we have, I mean, we've got four point two seven million in the bank right now. That would cover us for that project, the Rock House and.
The radios.
Yeah.
All this, we've got, yeah.
Everything we have in works.
For a year, yeah, but.
So a quick estimate was that we could be looking at. Uh somewhere around sixty thousand a year. Based on current CD rates, other rates. Um once we get it invested, sixty thousand a year income that we can still, that we would probably be able to use for the general fund. That would help with fire department stuff, but it wouldn't, you can't, we wouldn't be able to do both the fire department and a second officer. So it's kind of. It's kind of, it's such a huge unknown. I'm not sure where to start on some of it. Um. But.
Where's the fire department budget in here?
It is completely out. So you see, you have a police, a police budget and you have a water budget. There's no fire budget because it's all under the public safety. Something public safety. We pulled the, we pulled the fire department completely out of the general fund fund last year. And we're doing it in this.
Right, well, we've got enough money to fund it for several, several, several years.
Possibly, yeah.
I mean, they're, they can't, they're not gonna mess with existing money and if it's already budgeted towards something. That doesn't mean we won't have to train ourselves to get back into the general fund over the next, say, four or five years.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, we can do that, so you can.
You know, that may happen naturally based on. I don't know.
Yeah, but that's, that's my fear is that we we get in a situation where we are so, we've overextended ourselves too much. In the general fund. That. We start causing hardship in other areas. And like I say, salaries is probably the primary one. I think that's the best example. If we go, if we do something we cannot recover from later. Let's be aware of that, because then we lose employees. So. Um. Okay, so that said, with that in mind, let's be looking through this, at this, through that filter. Uh I believe we're, go ahead and start working our way through. The budget that Linda has worked so hard to give us. There's always a conflict because there are two sections in our. Charter and ordinances that say the mayor has to present the, the uh a balanced budget and the clerk has to present a balanced budget. So she's done all the work on this, other than fire department stuff. I did that and police, I think Tanya put care of that. So. Uh let's go ahead, let's get going. On how, how much of this you guys are viewing with that? Five minutes, five minutes. Okay, so. We have a three thirty thousand view of this right now, so we're gonna have to get a little more detailed than that.
Okay, so just starting with general fund revenue, um of course, we don't have our digest yet, but. Uh this year, we brought in. Two hundred and sixty one thousand nine ninety eight, once we got the utility assessments, which always come later on. So I never really know, but if I just take um. What our but, or what our digest was last year, I think, you know, we can stay at that six nil and not, you know, not go up and then. We. Could be lost, or we could, you know, dedicate that money to something else if it comes up more.
Why did we go up on this year's budget up to two sixty one versus what we have budget? Do we have some extra funding somewhere?
Mm-hmm. So when they do our digest, um the numbers for the utilities do not, are not included. Like they come in later. So they're included at last year's values, and then if they come in higher, then you get a little boost.
Oh, they ever go down? So that's why you're at.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, that's why you're at two forty eight. You don't want to make an assumption on that.
Right. So there's some fluctuation in there, so.
So that's where you you're anticipating us to be at, two forty eight, two forty five?
That's, that's what we need to balance.
Okay. Um, yeah, one other.
Should put us easily.
It looks reasonable. One other quick thing on that, it won't affect us this year. It probably won't affect us for the next, I'm gonna estimate three years. But we were at a meeting recently and we know about the homestead exemption. Okay, so we opted in. We opted in because we wanted to be able to do the floss, because that would help us. And yet, I'm hearing at a meeting that. One of the counties, not gonna mention names, they're not.
No intention.
No intention to do it, right? Isn't that, I'm not gonna say. I don't want to piss somebody off just yet, because it's not common knowledge yet.
Oh, I got you.
I want to kind of push them on it and say, hey, your voters said they wanted the floss. So. Um, yes, so let's keep that, let's keep that in mind as well.
But it doesn't hurt.
It's not, it's not affecting us this year. It's got nothing to do with this year's budget, but I want to throw that out there and say, all right. So property taxes right now, without homestead exemption issues, two forty eight, two forty five.
And so everything else, um there's no big changes from this year to next year and from what was budgeted like. My, um. On insurance premium tax, if it, you know, came in at eighteen seven twenty five instead of seventeen hundred, so I did up that. Um some things. Alcohol beverage license, I went down a little bit since we don't have the other restaurant and don't know if that's ever gonna happen. Um so everything else, the um. Safety grant is still in there at six. Um we have not done the safety grant in the last. Two or three years.
I'm all about it. I was trying to let y'all have it to have some.
And I, we appreciate that. I've just been so busy.
To do it if you just tell me where you want it.
So that's fine.
I'll give it to y'all, y'all.
That we, we appreciate it, but it's, like I said, it's it's free money.
Oh, yeah.
That money comes from our uh. We buy insurance for the GMA. Through GMA, basically. And this is kind of a payback. So it's like getting cash back.
Like a rebate?
Yeah, and we've, we've left it. We've left it on the table for the past few years. When do we have to have that in? October. Okay, so we'll, we will work on it this year. I'll give it.
But I think you have to have it bought, spent, approved by our state, I think.
No, I thought it was like, you have to hear, you have to have it bought, but anyway, we'll work on it. We are gonna go forward with that this year.
Anyway, it's still, it's still in the budget.
So I'm gonna, so I put it, so I threw it in, so.
And fines and forfeitures, I decreased um just a little bit. I know we've had trouble with. The Tahoe's this year. I don't know if y'all are aware of all the issues with that.
I own one.
No, well, it's not the Tahoe, it's the.
Well, it's the electronic system of the Tahoe.
It may be the integration. Yeah, maybe the integration. It's the Tahoe. It's the Tahoe, yes. Was, okay, so technology of the Tahoe is not wanting to integrate the. Camera and picady and printer and.
It's a mess.
Chris, I mean, Chris came out, he was in, he was in our tool locker over here in the fire department one day. Because the charging port of his Tahoe wasn't interacting with, I think, the printer or something. And he couldn't figure out why. He's trying to chase down whether there's a fuse bad or blah, 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 and I'm going crap.
Yeah, and they've taken it in like three places.
At one point, he left the key fob in our pocket and got out of the Tahoe and killed the printer. It's a big, a key fob in there and it worked, but now, today, happened again.
If you walk, if you walk near my Tahoe with the feed fob, it wakes up and starts burning the batteries.
I don't, I don't get it. I've never had.
And and the, and here's the, here's the problem with that, is that if the printer isn't working. He can't issue citations on the road. He has to hand write them, which now adds additional time. Which you don't want to delay someone on the road unnecessarily, right? So he ends up letting people go with warrants.
So just going back tomorrow to Dana Safety to let, now we find you comment, and if not, I'm going to.
Where's it gonna go to the dealer?
That'll be the next stop.
And this has been going on for.
It's killed us for four or five nights this year because of this. I'll take anything at this point.
Yeah, it's been a mess. First, it was the camera system, and then they couldn't, they couldn't run tags, they couldn't, they had no camera.
Is the part time Tahoe still giving us problems?
It's coming back today. It's finished. I put an old printer on it this time.
Oh, I mean, but for the electronics and stuff, is it still?
It's not been an issue really, but the electronic part of it.
No, the mechanical issues on that truck, yeah, fully aware. Uh my, my avalanche is actually a Tahoe. Package, and I'm, I'm about to have to take mine in for transmission, I need a new transmission.
I had to, I'm not avalanche, right?
Yes, anyway, all right, so. Fines and forfeitures were down because we've had some issues. All right, interest revenues.
And our interest revenue um is gonna be a lot higher than that. We just, our CDs just matured, so this doesn't reflect. The money that we made on those, so.
And that's something we'll be talking, I'm sorry, uh we'll be talking about in the regular meeting about some of, how to reinvest some of that, so.
Um the UPS rent, we're still getting even though they're not using. I guess I still have the option to use it. Um, I'll take it. The transfer out to water is less, but that is also based on um. Doing some adjusting to our water rates, to try to bring those up some.
I've got to call. Got to call you with the groundwater. I completely forgot. We didn't need to do that.
I, I looked at what Denver is is charging. They just updated rates for twenty four. For their customers. I looked at those. I looked at the Raven County Water and Super Authority. Um. Either one of their models would net us more money um than what we're getting now, other than. Our base, like the thirty one dollars that we charge. So we, we. The per rate thousand over the two thousand, theirs are much, much higher than than what we're charging. Um but the thirty one dollars for the two thousand is higher. Um Sky Valleys is a little bit higher than ours, it's turning thirty nine fifty.
When we buy water from Denver, this is a flat per thousand, right?
For us, yeah.
So there's not a, okay, there's not a scale on it.
Right. Yeah. So, so there's some different things to look at on that, that I think um. I didn't actually change the revenue budget for water, but we're probably not gonna make, wanna make our revenue for water.
We're gonna need to up our water rates. We need to up it, but we also, because we haven't done it since twenty six, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen?
And if we stay in line with the other local area, I think that would be okay.
Well, we need to make, we need to make an ordinance that it change, that it adjusts every year based on CPI or.
Yeah, I looked, two thousand nineteen to now is like, it would have changed it from. Thirty one to thirty nine, thirty nine, just in the twenty five percent inflation.
Two thousand nineteen?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because in twenty twenty one, we had a seven percent inflationary rate. Twenty twenty two, six point five percent inflationary rate. Every other year averages out to about three, roughly three percent. So that was more than double for two years in a row. So that's ridiculous. And we haven't adjusted for that at all. So we need to, we need to tie that to something and index it and moving forward.
What is expenses from other departments?
What is that? Police, police, water, uh no, police, administrative.
Says all the following pages. It's all the departments.
Except for fire.
You've loved it.
Yeah, that's just on that page. So behind it is all the details behind that. So.
So executive and legislative.
Executive and legislative, um no big changes. Insurance was up a little bit, so.
Elected official salaries the same. Take care of our employees first.
Any questions on nothing?
Let's see insurance.
That's our general liability, um. Elected officials, yes, oh. It's everything except for.
I heard about it earlier, door closed.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So that's all of our liability insurance. So there's elected officials.
I mean, rather.
Yeah. We, we still, I still have in there, because I wasn't sure um if if you all are running again, or, you know, I I kept in there some travel and training, you know, in case.
Yeah.
Um.
You all get reelected, you don't have to go back to the newly elected official training then. So. I think it sounds crazy.
Oh, I loved it. I loved it. I loved the guy. I don't like to go back.
I would, uh, I enjoyed it.
My favorite one, I guess was the guy from Atlanta kept asking the question, and the lawyers up there were like, this one, we were there, they're like, oh, no, we can't do that. I'd be like, I don't think you can do that.
Yeah, we, yeah, Craig and I took it together.
Every question. Every question they asked.
Like, no, don't do that.
I took it with time, we had a great time.
You know, it's a good, it's a good thing. Yeah, so we've got it in there. Wanna go back? Alright, so.
Moving on to administration in courts. There is an increase in salary, minus split between administration court and water. Everything else is pretty much in line. Did decrease some on legal, hopefully, um, this year has been. Well, this year so far has been um a lot better than normal, so.
But recent developments, we'll get into. There may need to adjust that, but let's just stick with this number.
Everything else is just slight modifications up and down, but it for me is already almost exactly the same.
We're gonna book this guy.
And then same on court, everything. Yeah, everything that is, doesn't fit somebody else gets lumped into administration, so it's, you know, that. It's kind of administration, general government is, you know, what a lot of that takes care of is. Your audit, your insurance, your legal fees, IT.
Some of these things are gonna be going up. I mean, I, I got a, got a quote for new radios. For the fire department, it's a little lower than I was, than I'd anticipated, but. We won't be able to buy them till the end of the year, and I don't know what the tariffs are gonna do to us.
We won't be able to buy them because they're not available?
We can't buy them yet because they don't actually exist. In the, in the configuration we need, but it was on a, we, we can get into that another time, but. Uh, in order for us to have a single unit that I can hold in my hand and communicate with all of the. Entities that we deal with on the fire department, there was one radio that was very close, but it lacked one digital element. And uh, they, the company actually had been promising that functionality two years ago. And it looks like it's gonna happen this year, late, late, late this year. But anyway, so. Some numbers in here are a huge guess. Because we don't know how the tariffs are gonna affect some of these things and.
Well, and all the radio maintenance, anything with radio. Related is in public.
That's all public safety, so. But as we're looking at stuff through here, we're going, yeah, there may be some tariff issues. There may not, we'll see, so. Just a big guessing game right now.
I moved ahead.
You're ahead of me. No, that's fine, we're on police split. I'm fine with that.
Police, again, unless Bonnie has something to add, everything pretty much, Dana and I took, we took out the um. The radio fees, so that went down from this one and then it's added into the public safety budget. Increase in salary.
What percentage are you allowing for cost of living?
Um, we did cross the living last year. This one is not based on cost of living.
This one is, uh, let me see. This one is a six point five nine percent increase. Last year is a three point two. And like I said, the average over a twenty-year span has been roughly three to three point four. So. Um, plus note that she got a forty-five percent increase in this year, twenty twenty-four. Which is fifteen years worth of cost of living, yeah. Not, not, not that it's not unwarranted, it's just. You're not in line.
Just trying to bring it up in line with her counterparts, like.
Uh, no, she's way above her counterparts. Oh yeah, uh, there was, there was a discussion among the mayors. Uh, several months ago about law enforcement starting pay. And then it broke into various levels of pay. And then there was another side discussion I thought was really interesting about housing allowances. For people that live, because we can't require someone to live in the city limits. But they, so Atlanta, South Fulton and other places are doing a housing allowance. For any public safety personnel that live within the city. So based on that discussion that was going on, police chiefs of, of a town our size. They're making from about fifty-five to sixty-five thousand a year, and right now. We're looking at an increase to eighty-eight thousand, so that's significantly above. The average for a community of this size. Now, keep in mind, we see eight hundred thousand people come through here every year, so.
It's different.
I'm not, that's why I'm saying.
We're a unique situation.
Yeah, it's unique, so I'm not saying, I'm just, but what I do wanna keep in mind is, this is one of those items. If we do a six, six point five nine, which is above the inflationary rate. We're not gonna pull that back next year, so just, let's, let's be aware of that. Um, as we're considering the fact that we may lose access to that capability. And it's not just here, it's, there, there are other places that that exists, I just, that, that's just. That's a low hanging fruit, so it's easy to, easy to see. Part-time staying the same. We don't need to increase that. Per hour rate, so I guess, so. Um, a bunch of these we can't change, we don't know what social security, we know social security, but retirement contributions, POAB. Stuff like that, we don't have any control, so.
Linda, what was your raise?
I mean, same.
And yours is three point two, oh, we, 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 we're sorry, that one went wrong chart. Eleven point nine seven in the one, seventeen point six six in the other. So, so average, you're, yeah, you're trying to say right.
So, back to my point earlier, are there things in our budget that we could. Put over to public safety that we're not, that would not be affected. With the change down the road. I mean, like equipment, vehicle repair, cell phone, safety, uniforms, gasoline, diesel, couldn't that just fall under that?
It, it could, but. Right now, the big balancing act we have is that. Finds, finds speeding citations between. Eleven miles, am I correct? Eleven to twenty miles over the speed limit. The fines from that level cannot be, cannot make up more than thirty-five percent. Of your budget, your, and we assume law enforcement budget. So. There are times they need to issue that citation at that level. Mostly they don't, because they wait until they're doing twenty-one of, for the most part.
Yeah.
But you need that buffer, just in case.
That's such a ridiculous rule.
So first of all, you're allowed, in the state of Georgia.
And they're gonna want to build all the roads and do it.
But just to give you some idea, like, we're less than ten thousand dollars worth of fines. In that level right now, so out of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget. I mean, we're, like, because Chris usually writes more than twenty over GSP doesn't count. So, I mean, it's, it's a very small amount.
But the, I think, so basically the idea though is that leaving as. Much here as we can in the general fund helps give us that buffer for. When those citations come in. We're also probably gonna include the uh, public safety. Budget for the other employee as part of that too.
Well, have we seen our fines and forfeiture, forfeiture spike? Uh, not the, not the. School thing go up since we retired too?
Again, our, prob, the problem is the.
It has, it has gone up.
Yeah, it should be. Your thing in there, it should double.
It has gone up since, uh.
I mean, the speed cameras show that it's there for the take, and so just, yeah.
Right, so, um, so yes, to answer your question, Scott, we can, remove some stuff. Maybe we can shift a little bit out, help cover that.
Well, I mean, you had mentioned seventeen thousand, I have laid, but it's roughly fifteen thousand.
What would that, what would that be?
Again, if we go with equipment, vehicle repair, uh, cell phone, safety, uniforms and gasoline and diesel. That puts us at about just over fifteen.
Okay, uh, the problem is we have to put all that back into the general fund if we lose access.
Right, but we could. I mean, it's as opposed to salaries, we can't pull back on that. It'd be safe for the next three or four years, I agree, but you're training your general fund not to handle this in the future is what Mike's trying to say, but. But we are four, three or four years out of that, I think, so, but. What'd you say, one? Having any kind of issues like that?
So, just like I say, let's, let's keep that forefront. I'm glad you're thinking that way, um.
Mike's trying to massage, keep our general fund. I wanna keep, I wanna tack, cause you'll put more money out of your general fund than other options about, and then all of a sudden it's it's.
Basically, what I wanna do is I want to keep in mind that. I think this is, as a, as Tom, uh, Tilly would probably think of it, it's a big chunk of meat. So there's a big piece of, we wanna make sure that there's a big piece of, piece of track, uh, fat that we can trim off.
Absolutely.
So our department and other funds can come back into that general fund. What's, what's that fat?
That makes sense. We gotta keep on the train.
Anyway.
But if you do have. Money in your general fund that doesn't get used, that does increase your fund balance at the end of the year, which. Can then be used for the next year if it's needed, you know, that.
Right, and part of the reason we, we continue to be able to function in the black. As a town is that we've acted prior to a few years ago. We never spent a hundred percent of our fu, of our budget. Uh, Bill, Bill and the fire department and all of us, we would, and like we did with the forks on the tractor. We say, hey, yeah, this would be nice, but can we do it cheaper? Keeping that mindset, moving forward, leaves us money that we can then throw in the bank, and that gives us a little extra buffer here and there. But like fuel for the vehicles, that's gonna be necessary. I don't know that we should pull that. The general fund, cause if we lose access to public safety, we still need that fuel.
Oh, absolutely. Well, I mean, all of that, that howling is still necessary, so we can just get rid of it.
But like, if you look at the fire department budget, I've got a pretty big ask in for equipment this year, because I'm afraid I'm gonna lose access to that money. So, yeah, I'm gonna be buying some equipment this year.
Well, I mean, you never did buy the equipment, did you? Last year.
And part of that was because it wasn't completely necessary at the time, but.
But the helmets were out of date.
Yeah, the helmets are out of date. You should have done that. So, um, so yeah, we're gonna hit a lot of that this year, this, this. This recent session of Congress. Was a wake-up call to me, and I'm like, I've gotta get on the ball. As fire, as fire. Part of it, we've got to get this stuff taken care of, because otherwise. We're gonna lose, well, without access to, so, and that would not be good, so. I think that we have an opportunity, I need to take advantage of it, so I'm fully to blame for that. No, no, I'm, I'm just saying, I take responsibility, but stops here, as uh, Ron Raven would have said.
So where are we doing additional tree trimming?
That's just something that we always keep some money in the budget, um, that, it doesn't show it every year, because some years we didn't. Actually spend it, so those, like twenty-three and twenty-four, those are actual numbers, so there was. A budget line for them during those years, we just didn't have any done. So it's, you know, it's whenever we needed trees taken out, like, you know.
But we didn't, we spent tree money on clearing out behind the rock house last year?
Yeah, that was safety management, the rock house project.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, we, I do know of at least two. Situations where the town will be liable if a tree were to fall across the road. And uh. Yeah, so we will probably use enough this, this year.
I would like to put a request in for additional gravel. Um, of the cul-de-sac and then. That road to the tank is getting bad again, it needs some gravel there.
Yeah, we need to get it.
Again, I know you've got. Well, that, I don't know if that falls under road, uh, road repair or not, but.
It should, and.
We're talking about a lot of money, gravel, but still.
No, it should, but the problem, the other problem we have on that, which is going on Gary's list. Is the culverts keep getting clogged up. If those culverts were kept clean, so we'll probably clean them out this year, but then I'm gonna put this on Manuel's. List, but they need to keep those ditches clean. Now that may increase how much he's gonna charge us. By a little bit, but we're not quite there yet, but yeah, those culverts up through there, when that was done, right? It was beautiful for a long time until. The culvert's finally clogged up, and it's the same thing across from.
And why does, forever we had put down and that cul-de-sac has been washed.
Yeah, now that's a different button, yeah, that's a different scenario, but yeah, I do need to get, what is that, GAV? I need to, I need to get another order of GAV, we ran out last year, and so before Gary gets back, I'm gonna have it over and. I've got other places we need it, we've got that rip wrap we need to deal with. Uh, in some other areas, we're having some, up on Hape and Mountain Road, we've got some. The asphalt's starting to break off in certain areas, so, yeah, that's a. There's gonna be a lot of road and right-of-way maintenance on the list this year.
So do we have money in the budget to cover that?
I think so, cause we didn't really use much of it last year. So I think we've got enough for now.
Yeah, that was my only question, is do we need to raise it at all, or is it gonna be inclusive?
I think, I think we should be good for now. In fact, we also need to do some work at the rock house, when they put the. When they did the grading up there for parking. The runoff is not being channeled properly, and we have a big rut up there, and I talked to Sean about it, he never came back, but. I just seem to follow that. So there should be enough for all, for a bunch of that kind of stuff, especially since we've got the, since we've got access to, uh. Gary and Don are here a few months, that'll be next month, they'll be here sometime next month, so. Late night, yes, so, I'm currently working on that list.
Um, water. Pretty much everything stays in line, like I said, for us to get to that sixty-five, we're gonna have to adjust rates a little bit. Um, the budget's the same, but we're gonna have to, we're not gonna make it.
How much do you think we'll see with the new meters and with the backflow valves, I mean, actually. Billing correctly, I can't tell the difference.
It's hard to say, and some of the.
We should see something.
Yeah, so here's what I discovered about that, um, the rest of y'all don't know about this, Scott's aware, cause he's one of them. We had three meters that had negative numbers, wouldn't read at the end of the month.
With the new.
With the new meter.
That's what we thought, but no.
No, they're hooked up correctly, so.
Can I have one from my house, please?
The magic, the magic meters, and I'm interested that he got one of them. The magic, the magic meters, and I'm interested that he got one of them. I'm, I'm calling the newspaper on that, no, I'm just, I'm just kidding, so here's my theory. When the meters were being put in. We had to drain the main line down here, two of the meters. One's my neighbor, which is the highest point on that line, the other was Larry, who's the highest point on his line. That's, that's operational, and the other was yours, which is the highest point on your line. These meters, I took one of our new ones, went through it backwards and the meter goes backwards. What I think happened was when we drained those lines down to do the repair here. We, you, you probably have a leak, and air was able to enter into the system. Through your meter, same as my neighbor, same as Larry. No, a leak in the house somewhere, like a valve wouldn't close completely, it may not even drip that much, cause air doesn't take much to get through, airtight, watertight, two different. Scenarios, right, air is easier to get through somewhere, so my theory is that when we drain the lines, it sucked air back. And that air moving through your meter spun it backwards. So, my theory, that's why I wanna put those backflow preventers in, so we can see. Uh, but like I said, those are all at the highest location of each one, so I don't know that we're losing as much at the meters as we. Started to think we were.
Yeah.
I may be wrong, I'm not an expert on that kind of stuff, but, uh. But yeah, uh, we. We're more likely to not have human error. In these new meters, and we're gonna start seeing a more consistent read, I think, but yeah, we need to watch. I wanna go to my neighbor's meter and watch and see if it runs backwards.
Have we done readings of the new meters? Have you been able to do?
Not, not radio yet, we've got one more, but, uh. Probably maybe we'll read this map and then it should be. They're trying to get it set up with the software is what's going on.
We have less, we'll have less waste this year hopefully too, right?
Yeah, well, we have to pay them, yeah, actually, our, uh, the settings and everything, the valve, the. The amount I have the valve open from Denver's. Is fairly level, now we're selling seventy-one thousand gallons a month right now to the boring crews. But I've got that set, we're, 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 we fluctuate a little bit, it's, it's running fairly flat across a chart. The pump up to gorge view is running fairly flat, but we still have losses, the problem is the losses are so, they're. Less than a gallon. And it's hard to find some of those, so, and that's, that's why I think like yours ran backwards because there's a leak. So stuff back, so. So that's why we had to pull the water advisory too, just in case something got sucked in by accident, so. Anyway, um, so hopefully, yeah, we will, it'll be nice to have more consistent readings. Something's more reliable, but yeah, we do need to keep in mind that there may be some backflow on some of these that we didn't know about. And that was an interesting kind of eye open to see. Cause when we do a repair, if we drain a line, what are we spending meters back to the fire in inverted and? Uh, yeah, we do need to increase our rate, and maybe just the. You know, two thousand gallons of, and above rate or something, we need to, but we need to talk to. Georgia Water and how people live in that, figure out what that is, cause. I mean, not everybody needs, needs necessarily pay a much higher rate, but people like my family, yeah, we, if we use more than that two thousand minimum. Yeah, we should probably pay a higher rate for the additional amount above that, so.
And there's, with the other, um, ones that I looked at. Um, like Denver's has a commercial rate, so they don't do the E R U's on the Reagan County Water and Sewer, uh, but they do the E R U's. Georgia Power is really the only one that's getting that, if you do it, you know, consistent on just a commercial rate. That seems unfair to our, on our commercial people, so. Um, I think that's something else we should learn. But yeah, we could, you know. Do little to a very small rate increase on our base and then look at our numbers on our third thousand, cause that's where it seems like we're. A lot lower than what's surrounding.
Pretty close to Denver, since that's where we're getting our boiler fund anywhere.
Yeah, well, I mean, just to, to tell you, like ours is, you know, like. Four dollars, four seventy-five, five, and theirs are, you know, seven forty-eight, eight twenty-six, nine oh three. For their, for thousands, so, so we're almost half. And Reagan County Water and Sewers, there's their basis for two thousand gallons and then it's nine eighty-one, a thousand. So, I'm super simple, figure out, but it's. Yeah.
Well, I mean, we're making up for six years, and we'll see.
Well, even that change was twenty years behind. So, uh, I think I ran a calculation back when they were talking about adjusting our rate, and I was like, yeah, we were doing eighteen. I was paying roughly eighteen a month for my water before the news, you know, paying way more than that now, more than double, uh. For twenty years, that's what I was paying a month, and, um. That's a lot of loss financially over a twenty years, almost twenty nineteen, nineteen year. Spain, right, so, so the budget reflects that we need to probably make a move in a future meeting to increase rates, and y'all study that.
Yeah, I mean, i- if we can get that, you know. Interfund transfer from the general fund down, that's, that frees up money for the general fund to be spent.
To be spent.
General fund expenses and not water. So, a big chunk of our budget goes to water. Um, next is the capital projects, basically everything on there is what we have available. To spend, that's kind of what we did last year, um.
There's some squads.
So it's all, yeah, it's all laid out exactly what there is, not that, you know, like. Swap seven, there's kind of taking sixty-one thousand, that doesn't necessarily mean we have a sixty-one thousand dollar project identified. But that's what's available in that swap account, so it's there if we identify something. That we want to use that for, we still have to improve that accounts. That that was a project to be used for. So there's a lot of road money in there, some of it is planned, some of it may not be planned yet, but again, that just gives.
Yeah, have you heard from Paversham that they let that out, and we got that it was on there. That's for most of that money as well.
Um, teeth gloss, again, what we have available now, um, those collections are still coming in. And we did find out that they're gonna try to, they're trying to get a ruling. Um, on whether we can keep collecting the teeth gloss, even if we meet what we say. If we can continue it for the rest of the years that it was planned, or if we have to stop and. Do another, you know, referendum, so. So we're still waiting to hear. And then, Hittam Hotel collects, that's gone down, um. We're getting very little Hittam Hotel, it's kind of funny, we upped, we upped the, um. The percentage in our collections went down. Well, we did lose one of our Airbnbs that were at, was out on the Loop Road, that one sold, so that's. That's contributing factors for that, so that's not coming in, but, um, that revenue has stopped down. So then we're into the special revenue fund, these public safety money into the fund. And each one of those is kind of broken down by projects. So we've got the. The, the full-time traffic, traffic safety officer, um. Increase there, there is a, a delta in from the housing incident that you talked about.
Oh, good.
It's in there, I don't know exactly what amount, but it was just put in there, but it.
How much did you put in?
A thousand a month.
Oh, wow, okay, yeah.
Like I said, I didn't have any direction exactly on what I was supposed to put in.
Yeah, I know that when, when we were looking for new officers, uh, back when Bill retired, we're looking for new, new, uh. Chief. The original language was that they had to live in town. Can't do that. State law, we can't require someone to live in town, so that's fine, actually, I think we said they had to live within so many miles of town. In that conversation I was talking about earlier about salaries, one of, several mayors said, well, we have a housing allowance. For public safety officer, uh, employees. And I'd be careful here to say, these need to be full-time paid employees, so it's not going to the fire, the Bonson Fire Department, that's not the intent. We already live here.
Yeah, right.
So, that's not what, what's going on here, the idea is that if someone, to incentivize having someone. Be a part of our community that is also law enforcement, public safety of any level, it's really beneficial. And there have been tons of studies on how that is beneficial, so, uh, yeah.
Are you, are you aware that Chris is looking at purchasing the lot next to me?
He's kind of talked about trying to figure out how to move to town, yes, I was aware of that, but I don't, people talk, so.
Yeah, I know, and it's.
But that would incentivize something like that, and it helped, and help do facilitate that, because one of the things we're lacking right now is that. In the evenings and night times, it's harder for either one, Tanya or Chris, or our part timers to respond. And there have been times where the, the counties have had to handle the situation. It'd be nice to have someone close by, and if you decide you want a public safety person. Like for the, with the plan, you know, something, it'd be nice to have that, so. Uh, I was actually just thinking something along the lines of, uh, three to four hundred dollars on the line, so it'd be thirty-six. Hundred to forty-eight hundred, but if we think, if we're pulling that out of here. And that may be the intention, is that as long as we have access to this money, we can do that, that we're not ever gonna be ordered out of the general fund. So, something for us, pretty often, so we'll have to word that carefully, we'll have to do something draft in, on the policy at some point, I guess. That was something I really was interested in, is to see like, do we plan and we have a, good, uh. Incentive to put back in what the people in town had expressed back in twenty eighteen. When we started looking for Bonson to bring to town, so the idea that we have someone being close by, so they can respond. So, again, that's fine.
Um, the next project, we did add five thousand dollars in other equipment, so we kind of moved. Equipment purchases from the general fund to. That lost one.
Those are products we've already allocated money towards, right?
Or this is new one for this one.
This, the, the five thousand dollars was, I mean, a shift from general fund to.
Okay, so the Axon income camera amount, that's like a annual. Wow, what's gonna happen when we don't have access to this money? There's another expense we have to roll in the general fund at some point, so.
Well, that's another reason we need to, um, invest this money in here, there's no interest up of it.
Yeah, yeah, if we're getting. If we're getting roughly seventy-five, no, sixty thousand a year out of it, well, there's eleven of it right there, so.
And we're hoping that more companies will come out where we don't have to be stuck with things like that.
Just acts, yeah.
Because the ones we used to have where we just bought the machines with the equipment, we used CDs and stuff, they're gone.
Yeah.
We're hoping some more are gonna come out, we don't have to be.
I, I mean, I, I hope you're right, but the way the software and hardware. Landscape is going is everything's going to subscription, uh, I used AutoCAD for years and years and years, cause I could use, I could buy it one year. Use it for ten, then upgrade. And, but now I'm having to pay sixteen hundred dollars a year for a license to use it, where it was sixteen hundred dollars. To buy that, buy that, and then I could use it for ten years, so. It's, it's killing me, it killed, I had to, I had to shut it down, I couldn't, I can't do it anymore.
On the next page, vehicle, the patrol vehicle insurance, so that is all of the vehicles except. For the chief's Tahoe, so the chief's Tahoe would be, is still in general fund, all the others will be. Pushed over there. Um, let's see. The emergency alert system, that's the leftover of what we haven't spent out of the original budget, so that's. Just a carryover, I think.
So that was the thing that I guess we gotta follow up on, getting the siren, that everyone's back here. Ready, so, I mean, we're seeing more severe weather, we need to get that, we need to look into that, I forgot, I actually forgot about it.
Did we get the camera mounted on the outside?
Yeah, we got. Yeah, we should be fully covered outside, and we've got one inside, so that, isn't something blinds, blindsided by someone coming in. So.
Yeah, so we're in pretty good shape, yeah, um, then we had talked one time about doing other cameras between the school and here. Rock House renovation, again, less kind of place, we don't know what that budget is yet, but. We can adjust as needed.
That did get a sense of the governor's office desk, the increase. In the, from hundred thousand.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That, that got sent to the governor's desk, so, um, we're awaiting, we got the. Kind of a rough draft of a contract. From Blake.
Rainwater.
Rainwater Associates for that project. Warren's gonna renew that, and we're gonna, there's a little bit.
So he's coming out tomorrow to look at some more things at the building to be able to fill in the blanks for that for review. And then we should have it for the main meeting.
And we were working from the, uh, standpoint of trying to keep the initial project under a hundred thousand, maybe breaking it into chunks. Why, because that was state law, state. Uh, Victor Anderson. Proposed to increase that limit to two hundred and fifty thousand, and it passed both the Senate and the House. And should be sitting on the governor's desk right now, we'll see if he signs it.
Been hurting, I, I heard pass, but I haven't heard him sign, he's got.
He's probably.
Hundred sixty, uh, he's got.
He's got a bunch.
Well, I think from signing, uh, which is only two minutes ago.
Yeah, I think he's gonna have it done by May fifteenth, is that correct? Yeah, I think by May fifteenth, they either have, they, they either get signed or they die, so, uh.
It, it really is, in, in that instance, it's really good thing, it's your cost of administration, if you do have to go out to bid, it's lengthy. So.
Hey, we moved the radio maintenance fees, um, for police and fire.
Yeah, so like I said, I've got a, we already have purch- are, already have a purchase order for the fire department. Radios for the trucks. I just got a bid in for the pagers and for the portable radios. And portable radios were somewhere between five and a half to six thousand dollars a piece. Um, I'd be wanting probably ten, so that'd be sixty thousand, let's say, just for a rough estimate. So we're prob- and the maintenance, I think. So we're probably, and the maintenance, I think, is gonna be quite a bit less, so it's three hundred and fifteen thousand. Maybe over go, so we may be, we may. Uh reassign that somewhere else at some point, so.
And the next one is. The C D for, um you know, if we want to do extending that, I mean, we have. We have the money that we put in the original C D to reinvest, that one's matured and we've got to put it where we're gonna put it. But if we want to assign any additional.
Yeah, we wanna keep going another.
I haven't put anything in that.
We want to, what did we put in originally?
Why wouldn't we just?
I would say if we want to go three years. Uh based on the line above. Um. We're at a hundred and twenty one thousand a year. For that position, I would say at least if we want to go three more years, we need to do. About three hundreds, uh three.
Three hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah. Then seventy thousand. To put into that, put into a C D, we'd keep. Doing the, doing as you do.
For any reason why we can't just do four hundred.
You got it. If that's what y'all wanna do. We got. Any opposition to that?
No.
Okay. We'll do four hundred on that, we'll extend that another three years.
So we're running out of money, I can't read my safety quarter.
Your, your safety quarter is actually, I think, committed.
Well, the design was we need to.
And that has to happen this year before they pass that law. All right, so we're on to.
Fire is pink.
So fire our base just for what we do without too much extravagance. Is uh twelve hundred and. Twelve thousand and a hundred and twenty. Roughly a month, so, or a year.
And that, well, it kind of encompasses the two sections, the pink and the yellow, because the yellow is the, you know, vehicle maintenance equipment and.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that's what I was gonna say is that the, the pink part is our base rate. The yellow part, this year I've put in for extra, so that can be reduced significantly. If we lost access to this fund, but for now, that's what I'd like to go with. Um. So we're looking at seventy, well, eighty thousand. Seventy eight, eighty thousand.
Why do we have turnout gear and helmets in for the new budget when it's already been approved?
It's just a carryover.
Carryover. Just, yeah, it's like place filler. Since it's already been approved.
You gotta. It says our budgets only go for one year, you have to recommit it basically.
And then the recruitment and retention, that's just our normal, we've always done. Uh I increased it slightly because. We've decided that in order to prevent. Tax withholding. That we, we would cap whatever firefighter could get is six hundred dollars. A year. So we still have to participate, they still have to be, you know, active member before they get any money. But uh that's to cover the cost of vehicle use, like I drive my truck to fire scenes a lot. Or I'll drive it from Turnerville to get here, to get a truck, so I'm putting my own talent, my vehicle, so that's, although I don't, I haven't. I haven't taken a check in the past five years, four years. Something like that, because I don't like the idea of the conflict of interest, but the other black flags, looking out for them, so.
Next is the Hickory Nut Mountain Fire Protection Project, that hundred thousand is kind of a placeholder, because I don't know what that number should be, so.
Again, that's mainly land, right?
Land will probably be the highest expense, the tank and installation might be next. When they, then equipment, so we're probably gonna be above that by a bit.
Have we done any engineering design?
We did.
Well, I mean, he came up.
He came up, but his, his approach was not. I talked to Lauren, he wanted to actually put an elevated tank up there. I was like, no, we can't do that, it's gotta be, yeah, it's gotta be on the ground. Um so I talked to Lauren, Lauren said, yeah, we can put in pumps and pressure stations. So that the homes in the area are getting an equivalent pressure at their meter. And uh so it's gonna cost a little bit more and take a little more space.
Will there be a backup generator for that system?
You really wouldn't need it for that, because you would still have gravity.
Just increase the pressure.
Yeah, there's just to increase the pressure, there would still be water. Yeah, just be lower pressure for a while until. Power was restored. Um. But as far as fighting fire, the way that I'm envisioning, envisioning it is that I would be able to drive a truck to a. Pipe and pull water out of that tank at whatever pressure I want.
The engineer designed it, he might. Do a redundancy, and he might have a generator set into his design.
Yeah, and if we buy the land out right, which is the intent. Then we can, we can allocate space to make sure that if we decide that, yeah, we really probably need a generator that we can do it. We gotta get it past that area.
You understand, boy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm right there with you.
So do I need to allocate more than the hundred, you think, for next, for, for next year?
I don't know, I don't know what, what did we see from that study? He said, I was expecting it to be almost a million dollars, and he said, no.
Which was the tank. Uh near my house.
I don't know, I wasn't part of that conversation.
We can update this though. Whenever we need to, because I'm waiting on, I should have a budget next two weeks on this, that I would do, if that makes sense.
But if we want to allocate in case we lose access to the funds.
You're not gonna lose access to the current funds. Why would you lose access to the current funds? It's already grandfathered in, you've added, oh, you wanna allocate to.
Project so that we can say.
Then you, if you want that safety, then you have to allocate all of it to something, right? I wouldn't, what do you think about that one? Current money we have, if they change the law, let's say tomorrow. That really is about to go.
If, if would, if you already have a budget.
It wouldn't be able to go retroactive where you get replays, things, maybe it's ability to have.
Now, what you already have in the.
What you already have.
Can you still spend it for what the current law says, law enforcement home accepted purposes? Or would it change?
As soon as the law gets enacted.
If, if they say all has to be spent, it's all has to be given to the schools.
Yeah, that was one of them.
So that means it's not gonna, if that was the case, your new money would go to school, but your existing money.
Provided it was allocated probably. So that's what we were thinking, that we had a budget in towards, so plus what Mike was saying that.
I mean, typically, typically, you can't go back, back.
That's what I was trying to say, so I don't think any of the money we currently have in the fund. Even if they change the law, it's not gonna go backwards, it's not gonna go, they're not gonna change it.
It should.
Okay. It'd have to be specific.
But if they're listening to this conversation for next year, they may write it into the law.
Well, but I mean, here's the thing, even if you allocate, right, is you don't spend it, you, there's something to use it. Should kind of like give us laws. I'd say, I think it's very, very. Unlikely that would happen.
I'd say to protect ourselves and be, be safe, we should save five, five hundred thousand.
Yeah, you could allocate some. It would definitely be a better.
Than even not putting the C D. Okay.
All right, public safety corridor design, we've got fifty capital outlay, I put two, I have no idea.
Yeah, we, we had a meeting last Friday, I think. They're supposed, they've got, they're finalizing the design with the engineering. Then they'll go through budgeting, and I'll do my own budgeting too, but I'm supposed to have a budget within about two weeks, so I can tell you. A much better number. But it's gonna be more than two hundred thousand a year to do that, it's gonna be closer probably. With the rock and the infrastructure needs to be done, and the pipe. Be piping and all that, and we'll probably end up paving everything, probably more in line than. Six hundred fifty, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars.
For the public safety corridors, is that the, the roundabout?
Yeah, yes, roundabout, the sidewalk sidewalks, doing some covert up. And the paving, and I like to pave everything. Once it's done, because it looks like crap.
And it's gonna improve access underneath the bridge, also is that.
It, we did put in the. Russell around the D and R section in this budget to help out, to do our part on the uh rails and trail project.
That's good.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we won't. The plan was to avoid the whole frauder scenario, right, right?
Exactly, crossing the road, it's gonna create a more open.
Good.
Underpass.
So that's so important.
Yeah, that's safety. So, so I'd say it's seven fifty to a million.
You get your budget and we'll.
Right, so I have it, I'll have it here soon.
All right, triangle rescue team, they have not spent. Nearly what we allocated before, and you had given me ten. But I wasn't sure, did I need to add ten? Or just do. What's left out of what we already improved? I was confused. Sixty one for fifty. And they've spent eight thousand thirty five.
Why have we improved so much?
Well.
They had a whole list.
Well, the biggest, the biggest thing, the reason I turned it ten was the biggest thing on that was water and electrolytes. We had bought. Drones and some other things, but those still belong to us, they're the pilots, which, you're the Chico's moving. He's coming from North Carolina, so. Our pilot for Haversham. Took a six-figure job in North Carolina. No, he's a great guy, I love him, I'm happy for him.
Are they gonna spend the sixty one thousand dollars? They've only spent eight thousand, all that six million dollars.
Turning it in as they needed things.
Okay, so we don't want to take it away.
No, I would, yeah, the, the ten, the ten thousand from my point of view was water. And electrolytes.
Well, is that not into sixty one thousand?
Basically, I think a lot of what the eight thousand that they spent this year.
That's why I thought. Ten was covering that.
Right, so I just need to add then the difference between what it's.
Or just move over. Yeah, move the balance.
Move the balance, yeah.
That's why we improved in the meeting.
Okay, all right, I'll change that.
Cause I wanna make, I just, I don't wanna make sure that our guys are. Being well hired.
We got sixty one thousand four hundred fifty six dollars to buy more hydration.
And we can amend a little bit, but there's also gonna be a new change with D and R, we just had a meeting. They're gonna tie access to the. Steps, they're thinking about. They're trying to work out whether they can do it or not, but they're gonna tie access to the stairs to the heat index. Meaning their heat index is gonna be above a certain amount, they shut the stairs down, that's gonna reuse a lot of our colleagues. So, that seemed to, so, I don't know what's gonna happen yet, they're still talking about it. Be nice. Been asking for that for about fifteen years now.
Have you heard they're gonna close the short lines for a week coming up soon? Yeah, they're repaving sections, so they're gonna close the trail for about a week.
They're gonna grind out some of the, those homes, we had a lady, one of our residents tripped on those homes. All right.
All right, then the R M S and mobile software, and that's the annual fee for the other. That's the. Is that the interop? One of them's axolotl, so they both have an agency. And then on the winter weather stuff, I know you mentioned needing um blades. So that's.
Oh, for the. Yeah.
So I put five thousand in there just to.
That probably more than covered. I wanna get our uh current snow plow for the F one fifty has uh. A mild steel blade that can only scrape on one time. And it eats it down, so we get maybe one or two plows out of it, like snowstorms. I wanna get, I went to uh. Piedmont Metal and asked them to do one to double where it can reverse it. And be hardened. So it's less like, it's gonna take longer to grind down, it'll eat up the roads more.
Did we get the caboba yet?
No, that's, we're still waiting for the stupid snow plow.
Plow hasn't, they've got it, everything but the plows that is still there.
Still waiting for the plow coming over. Well, that's fine, except that I'm afraid that it's coming from China, we're gonna have to pay a three hundred percent tariff on it. So, I know it's exaggerated, it's still.
The idea for the cabota is to use it. For calls and emergency calls.
Well, we can go get the.
Back from them to install the plow, which is the reason I haven't gotten it, but.
Gary might.
Gary's, yeah, Gary's gonna be here.
They don't have a snow plow, Gary will pick it up.
We may do that, so. And I have access to a trailer that he can borrow to. Pick it up. So.
I got a.
Yeah, that's what I've got, is a landscape trailer, when you ramp on it, this probably, you don't have a ramp for that on a trailer, so, but landscape trailer handling is fine. That's it.
Great job.
Anything, any other input, any other? So next meeting on the budget will be. A public hearing? Since we didn't really make that, any changes? Or do we need to have one more?
That's up to y'all.
I didn't see any stops, yeah.
So we have a public hearing, May.
Be our main meeting.
Main meeting, before our meeting, we'll have a public hearing. And then we will. Will we approve it during that meeting?
Gonna be, the public hearing has to be at least a week.
Yeah. Not yet. Okay. All right, so then I would like, did I need a motion to adjourn from the workshop? Scott will make the motion, Jimmy seconds, all in favor, unanimous, we're good to go. So I will go ahead and move into our. Regular monthly meeting for the town of Tululeah Falls. For April of twenty twenty five. And we will stop for a moment aside. All right, need to uh have a motion to adopt the agenda, Scott makes the motion, Jimmy seconds, all in favor. Unanimous, wait for the texture. Uh need a motion to adopt the consent agenda, Scott makes a motion, Jimmy seconds, all in favor, unanimous. Do we have an attorney report? None, old, no, no old business, so new business. Is the uh. Proclamation wildfire preparedness day of May third. Uh we are a firewise community, which means we meet certain. We fill out certain applications and do certain work. We allow our homeowners to be aware of how to keep their homes. Then we. Not protected, but reduce the risk of wildfire. Uh damage, as we, 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 yesterday was a wild, was a red flag warning, we've had more red flag warnings, there have been continuing times, so. This one, I'm not a hundred percent sure where it came from, to be honest.
The proclamation?
Yeah.
From their.
From who?
From their website.
From who? Is it firewise? Okay, I thought it would be, so, okay. Uh so I need. Was there's any uh. Conversation and question about that? I need a motion that I can sign that proclamation, Scott makes the motions, Jimmy seconds, all in favor. Here proclaiming, okay, our public safety. Council member is proclaiming. I will sign it.
council member is proclaiming, I will sign it. Oh. Alright, I was waiting to see what that said. Uh, business, uh, wildfire community, there's. Investment, someone, Linda, she's done a lot of research. Um, couple of things on this, I don't know if you've included this or not. We can legally invest in T dollars, CDs, and government bonds. We have some governments, and I've mentioned this in at least one of the meetings, that may be having some big projects coming up. That we could buy, we could buy those bonds and help them go ahead and do their projects ahead of time. An interesting consideration to use the uh public safety money for while we're investing it. Buying bonds and by doing so, we help push a project forward sooner. And I think Clayton is one of them that might be interested, they're going, about to do a project. Um, if we can get the water with all of greenelia, maybe we can help bond in that. And get a return on that, but helps push their project forward soon. That's the idea, so, I remember Linda, we don't have, I mean, it seems like four point whatever means a lot, but when you start talking about these level of projects, it's not it, so. Um, so I'll let Linda go ahead and get into what she's found.
Um, so I have thought to Julie um about it too, and I mean, she did send me some information on the Georgia Fund one, that's another option, the local investment. The only thing about that, from my understanding, is that it's not insured. Um, it is unallowable.
That's against our ordinance.
Yeah, right now, but, I mean, the rates are, are good, but, you know, I don't I don't, I don't like the fact that it's not insured, but. Um, are the local bank, um, I worked with United. Our local bank, they gave me some six months, twelve month, eighteen month rates. Um, but they, they kind of pushed me to talk to their bigger provider, which is the information they're in the packet. For the advisory and first the highest is the, the Bank of America CD at three point nine. Um, that was for twelve month. Um, there's, they did a twelve month, a two year and a three year, and then like I said, I, I did pull some we can do treasury direct to, which you can buy T bills for that. The one year was three point nine, so it was the same thing. And then on their second thing, they did give us some treasury notes, um, that three point nine was still the best of all of that. Then the Georgia Fund one, what is at like four, um four point seven. Most March. Um, the six month rate, it is the highest of any of the six month rate at four. That wasn't much, much better than the three point nine, which was a year. So other than the Georgia Fund one, but our best option was the one year at the.
The Bank of America. It's not a good sign when they, the longer you wanna keep them there, less you're right.
Well, they're expecting, they're expecting change. Because, but no one knows what to do right now. So we're talking about just reinvesting what we already have CDs or remote.
Right, I think we need to invest more of it than, than we currently. What we had talked about, or what I had told them and what we had said, was maybe around two million. So, that's kind of what I told them, and I came up with these numbers.
Yeah, I'd say that invest whatever we aren't anticipating needing to spend in the next.
Yeah, six month to the year, right. So you, you can read, based on our conversation now, you can readjust what we think we're gonna spend. Then you can give us more fixed number, do we have to make that decision now?
Well, we could reinvest what we have already decided, I mean, we can do that.
Oh, it is already.
Yeah, we can go ahead and do that now.
But your other amount's unknown until you, we, we adjust for whatever additional funds we need right this year.
I think she could go ahead and use what we've got now, because most of the changes we made to public safety is separate from general funds.
And the safety portal, it's gonna go up.
But do you think that's gonna be next year?
Yeah, I hope it'll be twenty six. I'll have plans here soon.
We could do the six month.
So yeah, you can doubt it, that would be safe.
You can do the six month, that would give us seven.
So do the seven fifty for six months.
Yeah, have four. Whatever, millions we have left over.
Yeah, that's the way to make the gap.
And then.
Then leave some buffer money in there.
I'll be buying radios, hopefully by the end of this.
You've already got that money allocated, alright.
We can invest for six months. Twenty five, maybe into twenty twenty six.
It's gonna be a lot more expensive then, possibly.
So a year or?
Any, any money allocated from radios would be six.
We can reinvest what we already have that's matured for a year. But then, the balance.
Six months. And then see where we are. And six months at a time, if we run into a situation where our neighbors want, would like us to contribute to bonds and see what the return would be. And if it's comparable, we say, yeah, we'll help you out and we've been by that bond.
So the, the water, what about the five hundred for the water? How long do we wanna do the five hundred for water?
Just six months.
If we could do a buffer, then allow a lay-in purchase, that would be our biggest, what everything else would take.
We could pull against something else that you're not spending right today, obviously.
Really need to get that.
I need to give a size and that way you, when you're alive, you really have a conversation, or at least one of us. And I may not be the best option. But
but yeah, we
We definitely do, especially now, we need to start going on entirely, and after last, and it's amazing.
Absolutely.
The iron side.
He opened the door.
Exactly, alright.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, the, I've got the ones we wanna do six month. The remainder, do you want me to go ahead and do, or do I need to come back to?
Yeah, I'd say go ahead.
The, the things that we say we're doing, you know, the regular monthly things, I'll leave here and then.
Alright, do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Jimmy's motion, got the second, all in favor, that's what we're doing.
Alright, uh, just about managing this. Alright, um, I'm not I've got comments, but I'm not gonna do it, um. Yeah, so we're gonna move on to public comments, I, I will say this, though, I really appreciate all the assistance we got the other day on the overturn tracking trailer for both Haversham and Raven County, they the sheriff's department, the fire department even GSP in a limited way, uh, were extremely helpful in taking care of that situation.
Was it a classic overspeed and hit that curb?
Was it coming, headed north?
Always, no, always had a sound.
We worked on that curve when we built this. Yeah, we took that pump out of it and everything else. We put the warning. Yeah, but D and T's gonna get sued because of the warning lights don't work anymore, I got a set of scales on it, it should be working, they don't maintain.
They don't maintain.
They would, the lights will flash and tell that trucker hey, slow down.
You used to tell me in the fire truck when I was coming by, if I was going a little too fast, you used to tell me.
They, they spent so much money on that. The commissioner, but.
But yeah, they uh yeah, everybody pitched in, we managed it fairly well, the truckers are always a problem because of getting the wrong lane and then you can't get them out of that lane and you're stuck, so. Uh, we're able to route people through Main Street, for the most part, passenger vehicles, and you can see where they tore up the, the meter shoulder a little bit, but that's okay, it'll, it'll recover. So aside from that um, because I also wanted to say that because the newspaper didn't mention anybody with GSP on that scene, and there, there are a lot of us out there. Uh, other than that, no more comments from the mayor, uh, open the floor to public comments.
Got anything, Justin?
No. Sure?
I'm sure.
Okay.
Uh, you'll have to appoint somebody to the Raven County Department, Superior Authority Board by the July meeting.
By our July meeting?
By, by the, by your June, it has to be on.
Party Lieutenant, are you willing to serve another session?
Well, I won't say that they like me, but I won't say they mean we are.
We will put it on next month, so. But as long as you're okay with, you've been doing a good job as far as I can tell.
No, it's, it's been, been good. So we really appreciate that. Any other public comment before we go into executive session? Oh, anybody's online? Alright, in that case, I need a motion to go into executive session for potential litigation. Jimmy's gonna make the motion, Scott's second, all in favor. Alright, we will shut things down, give us a few minutes, clear out, and Okay, I'll go on all.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to, I think Warren's asking me some stuff about it. Yeah, I'd like to, I think Warren was asking me something about it, and I think he's.
All right, so I need a motion to reenter regular session. Scott makes a motion, Jimmy seconds all in favor unanimous. And our favorite, I need a motion to adjourn. Scott makes a motion. Jimmy seconds all in favor unanimous.
Let's go.
All right, listen.
Thank you, Warren.
Yeah.
Thank you, Warren.
Thank you, your buck. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Warren. Good.
Yeah.